We're going to get started with our regular council meeting, October 6th, 2016. You'll notice that Councilmember Manning is not here with us this evening. He's had some health issues and so I just ask that everyone remember him to their thoughts and prayers, and we will certainly do that as we open with the invitation. If everyone would please stand with me, I'll give this invitation places in life. Let us pray. Dear the Father, we thank you for this day of all that you've done for us, and we thank you for the opportunity to be here to conduct city business, and we pray for your guidance and wisdom, helping us to move this community forward in a responsible way. Lord, we lift up to you, Councilmember Manning, we just ask that you would have your hand upon him, restore his health, and Lord, bring comfort and peace to his family and to himself. And, Lord, we also lift up to you, all of those who have been affected by the hurricane, all those who will be affected, Lord, we lift them up to you as well, and just ask that you would hold the edge of protection around them, that each one would be safe, there would be minimal damage to their own property and all this. Lord, again, we just thank you so much for your kindness, for your blessings, for your love, these things we pray that Jesus, amen. Ren, prop, salute.
To the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Janet, if we can have the roll call, please.
Mayor Langford.
Here.
Councilmember Cagle.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Councilmember Soul.
Here.
City Manager Bill.
Here.
City Attorney.
Allison, please, for our work. Again, thank you all for being here tonight, a night that is a little different from our normal. We usually meet, of course, on the second Thursday of the month, but I believe it was about four weeks ago, we decided to move this meeting because of fall break following next week. So, we're going to meet the first and fourth Thursdays this month, rather than the second and fourth. So, again, we appreciate you being here, and I trust everyone's had an opportunity to counsel to review the items in the consent agenda. That would be the minutes from the September 22nd Agenda Work Session, as well as the regular council meeting at the same time, and the July 2016 and August 2016 financial statements. Clear motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. We can have the roll call, please.
Councilmember Grabett.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Soul.
Yes.
Mayor Langford.
Abstaining. It's not here for the work session or for council meeting. At this time, we will entertain communication from citizens. If you are a resident or a business owner here in the city of East Ridge, you have a comment, question, or concern you'd like to bring to the council, this would be your opportunity to do so. If you will come forward to one of the microphones here at the front of the room and state your name and address for the record, you will have five minutes. And I don't know if anyone has signed it or not. No? No one? Okay. We have anyone in the crowd who has something to give us?
I think I just turned it off. Francis Fug, 1913, close robe. Thank you, gentlemen, for letting me speak to you tonight. Mayor Lambert, prior, just prior to the meeting, I gave you three pieces of paper. That first one of them is a letter. Could you please read that, or have the city attorney read it so everybody could hear it?
Certainly. It's dated October 28th, 2014. Dear candidate, since your name appears on the November 4th, 2014 ballot, you are permitted to place holdings and campaign material on city hall property beginning Saturday, November 1st, 2014, at 8:00 a.m. City of East Ridge is not responsible for owning signs, campaign material, et cetera. Each candidate is responsible for compliance with City Ordinance 867, which is attached. Any questions regarding those ordinance, please contact Mr. Terry Roberson, the Customs Enforcement Officer, City of East Ridge.
Now, bring this up tonight, gentlemen, because you are to discuss and take action on a rule of placement of tents on city property through the election. Should you, gentlemen, have to be dealing with this? Absolutely not. Chronologically, you have to be an adult to run for elected office, but sadly, some of those running don't act like adults. That letter, I was a candidate in 2014. That letter was brought to my door by a uniformed police officer on duty. What a waste of our law enforcement resources. Because I have pictures here, and Mayor Lambert has those, of two tent frames. You can see the date on them. It's dark, on 10/31. These pictures were taken at around, just right after midnight. So, 48 hours prior, we were all given this letter. Two of our candidates decided, oh, no, we're not going to go by what the city manager has informed us to do, which shows no respect for our city manager. Delivered by a police officer, we're going to go up there prior to that so we can get the spots we want. You can see, one tent frame on one side of the entrance off of Congress, the other tent frame on the other side. How sad is that? We have people wanting to make decisions for our city and our citizens that can't even follow the rules that have been given to them 48 hours prior to their action. Do we need a tent lottery? Yes, we do. We shouldn't. I hate that you men have to vote on it, but I certainly hope that you take into consideration that some of these people that run may not have the ethics and maturity that you, some of you, gentlemen, do. So, please, take this seriously, make our city manager's job easier, make our police department's job easier, and just because somebody wants their special spot, they need to go by the rules, just like the other. I think there were a total of nine candidates. Seven did the right thing. You can look on those pictures, no other flames anywhere around. At 12:30, there were two tent frames. Only two out of the candidates decided, nah, we're not going to go by the rules. So, you may have that issue. Avoid that embarrassment of this city. And there was a conflict between a couple of the candidates during that little episode. Let's don't embarrass our city. This is ridiculous. If you're not an adult, I don't care what your age fall is, please don't run for office for my city. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Do you have another? It's evening now, we will move on to communication from council members. Mr. Soul.
Aye.
Mr. Kent.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Tuesday, I happen to show up to Firehouse Sub out there at the Rock and Diner Club, okay? And I'd like to especially say thank you to our Assistant Police Chief for following through on trying to receive that grant. Chief Reed was there, and one of our officers, I think it's Officer Cushman, and he demonstrated this piece of machinery that they've been helping to do. So, you know, our ass sub has got this program going where they have created for some safety apartments, safety use equipment, being done through grants to all police fire departments and bylaws. And we received seven ADVs, and I had to go back and find out what an ABD was. It's an automatic electronic fiddling, okay? Officer Cushman, he sat there and worked that thing, and this thing pops to you, it tells you what to do. So, Officer Cushman, not going to let it stay, it shocked my heart. So, now, what I might say before following through is, and we received seven, and so, and this is over $10,000 worth of equipment that's not helping the city.
That is bad. Those have saved many lives. Sure, Ed. Thank you. Make sure to bring that out. Do you have anything else?
Officer Grant.
Mr. Grabett.
I don't have anything on that.
I do not have anything either. Mr. City Managers, you have?
I have nothing there.
Okay. Alex. Okay. At this time, we will move to old business, towards its number 1020.
Order number 1020, rezoning the property located at 1016 Greenslake Road from C2 Commercial District to 13 Residential Apartment District.
Make a motion to protect this on the table.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll say it.
We have a second to remove it from the table. Janet, if we can have the roll call, please. The yes vote is to remove it from the table.
Excuse me, Councilmember Grabett.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Soul.
Yes.
Mayor Langford.
Yes.
I have to make a motion to approve orders 1020.
We have a motion to approve the order that's 1020? Do we have a second?
I'll say it for the session.
Okay. We have a second.
Chief Custer, I'm sorry, what's your type officially now?
Chief.
Chief, okay, so you are chief. You finally made it.
I know.
Congratulations, officially.
I was enjoying the battle.
On this property, do you know how many police or buyer calls this property has had? I guess basically what I'm trying to get it out to, is this property a rezonement property?
No, sir, I don't believe so. They had roughly 16 responses over the course of a 12-month period. A few of those were 911 hang-up calls, the call list that's provided through Hamilton County, through Chief Reed, property damage, a burglary threat, a burglary, murder, burglary, and slash theft, and discipline.
Is, I'm sorry, is Mr. Boyd, is that, would you mind coming forward?
Glad you could see him. I couldn't, I didn't even know he was there. There's a little wall there, partitioned.
If you don't mind, Mr. Boyd, would you give us a recap on why you named this rezoning?
Originally bought the property 10 years ago. It has six units, and one of the units was a commercial business, and the other five were residential apartments. And it is, it's operated like this, it's not 1088. About two years after I bought it, the person who had the business retired, so I made it residential, and it was brought to my attention earlier this year that I was not good for it, because under the C2 commercial zoning, you can have a dwelling within the building in the zone commercial. I misunderstood that, it still had to have one unit to be commercial. So, like I say, it is operated as this way, but it's not in line with my insurance. I have insured it for an apartment, and if there's more than 50% damage to the building, there will be a conflict with my insurance, and I need to get it in, conforming with my insurance.
How many square feet is the building?
6,000 square feet.
With six units?
Yes, there are approximately 1,000 per unit, per floor.
Okay. Chief Custer, what's, did this build before the RPA or just our local zoning?
Both. We did, we said recognition from RPA, they said it wouldn't add any adverse impact, and they recommended for it.
Okay, just clarification purposes, and you and I have discussed this already, but the surrounding property, this would, this would conform with the surrounding property?
That's correct. There's another apartment complex, small apartment complex, just adjacent to this property.
Okay, so we're not getting into doing any type of spot zoning?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Okay. So, whether we approve this or not, it needs to be a lot of rate?
That's correct.
Okay.
And that's some of what I was discussing, we discussed it in the planning commission meeting around, not to make a seven, the RPA petition to do a citywide rezon, and that's how a lot of the properties became C1, C2. Before that, this property was actually urban residential.
Okay.
Do we have any other questions?
I have one more question.
Yes, sir.
Have there been any opposition to this rezoning?
There was some opposition, not necessarily directed at this tenant, but the neighboring property, just simply because they wanted to limit foot traffic from either complex into the commercial district where people were eating. So, that's something we're actually working with this tenant and the neighboring tenant on a barrier, which is probably.
But did y'all require?
He has one currently, around his property, but the barrier that needs to be required is for the other party that came to the meeting, but wasn't only agenda that didn't have it out of force, so that's something that we're just working on with him individually.
Thank you.
Anything else? Roll call.
Thank you.
Councilmember Grabett.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Soul.
Yes.
Mayor Langford.
So, that will come back to us for second reading next time. I'd be, discuss, take action on rules for placement of tents on city property on Election Day. This apparently came up for a vote, was a tie vote last time, September 22nd.
I'd like to make a motion to approve utilizing a lottery system for placement of tents on Election Day.
Sir.
Questions?
Yes, sir.
I have three questions, here, for, if there are no city offices involved in the election, say a primary runoff, should we take the time there to run a lottery for those elections?
If I'm not mistaken, there, every election cycle, there are city elections, it's every two years.
Yeah, but I'm talking about primaries.
Oh, you, and?
And if there's a runoff in the primary, because our city wishes to do our primary, it's primary or runoff.
The offices of judge and court clerk have been in all of this, during those properties.
It's like I said, there's no city offices taken here. I have our, ever since years for our judge, right?
Every day.
Yeah. So, we've been worth our time, never to run a lottery during those elections. And my second question is, does the city election have first options over the lottery, for instance? Because there's seven people running in this election, do we get the first seven spots, and then the rest of the candidates being named through 12, we're going to have Mark Pilep down here?
I think the way it's, I don't want to speak for the city manager, the city attorney or anyone, but the way I understand the resolution is, is that it's basically one through 12, and there is no certain area for city elections. So, you know, if Congressman Fleishman wanted to come down here and wanted to participate in the lottery, he could, and he would have the same opportunity as the rest of us.
May I see something on that one? That's not clarifying this.
Okay, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
That is not clarifying this, so, whatever way you go, because you can have somebody come in, be the one of the presidentialists to come in, either, you know, Clinton or Trump will say, I want my name in the hat.
That's what I'm saying, that's exactly what I'm saying.
We haven't, you haven't, that's not including this.
Right. Correct.
Well, this touches on my next question. If anyone that wants to campaign sign, sign up for the lottery like the vote knows and the vote yeses like we had in our last election, just anybody that wants to carry a vote and no sign, voting, signing for 10, and then also, or do they have to show some kind of proof they are part of that organization?
Don't you have to, if you're going to have the candidates on the top of the side, you have to register that, just like if you want?
That is, if you're going to put it up on that other side and?
Right, I think you have to register, yes, to be, you know, you're.
I'm talking about on the 10 o'clock, I'm talking about putting a sign up, up down below the lottery.
Lottery, yeah, I thought that they did, did you?
Yeah. If no one signs up during these elections, when the East Ridge City, no one comes in and signs up, then what are we going to do? Those 12 spots will sit out during, on the lottery?
And if no one, if no one expresses an interest in getting in the lottery, I would say we, we just, if they just show up on the morning of the election and throw a tent up, I say, well, sorry.
Hey, you know what? You know what? That's an alternative. We could just eliminate all tents when we see the problem. I love that. You won't do that, right? Like I said, my name's on the ballot.
Is that right?
It'll affect many people, just as much as everyone else.
My next question, do you just relax and put it in? Since qualifying is already over, the election prior to November 8th did not have a lottery, and the lottery is not mentioned in our political side ordinance, can we enforce that this year?
I mean, everyone that's particular, that everyone that would be subject to is only foot, so, so I don't think anyone has been, has been impacted unfairly, folks that are in this couple of elections, like, by a court.
You're saying then we can enforce this?
If you chose to, I think everyone is being treated, or no one being treated differently as per that kind of, of those upon the ballot of this particular election.
If I want to come in and sign up for a trump tent, I can come in and sign up for trump tents, or not trump sign?
I don't know if that's been really, there's other offices, and yes, I don't know if that's been discussed, as the city manager said, as far as what is in the resolution as we're coming on right now, or what those details have been in route, as respect to those higher offices, there's yes, no organizations.
Well, that goes back to maybe showing, asking, or they're going to have to show the proof that they are part of that campaign.
I think there's, there's probably various ways we can check that, as far as their status as an organization, you know, we have to, we have to research those details and how we would vet that particular organization. It's on top of my head, but, you know, there's, they are requiring me registered, or if it's a fact, or if it's, you know, this, there could be a myriad of groups that potentially could have an interest in the election, that sensibly could be part of, of this lottery, so that's something that we would have to, you know, guide as to what the council prefers. And, and make sure there's a way that we can vet, if that's something that we need that we get to do.
Each candidate, or we have to put up this one tent, can you put up the other third?
One, 12, by 12.
That's in the lottery, I'm talking about outside those 12.
If there are only 12 sides, where else would they?
Well, I'm talking about, we got on this board.
Imagine if they wanted to, yeah?
Or, or like we got seven, Mr. Grabett, there'd be eight people that I'm saying about outside of the lottery, and then there would have nine, ten, eleven, 12, left open, and Mr. Grabett could piece one, and then go down here and number 10, and put up another tent, Mr. Grabett's name. I, I just, that's just.
Well, I think, I think you certainly can restrict in the lottery rules, you can say, these 12 spots, you can only have one side.
Right.
Per candidate, per pack, per whatever, in these 12 spots. Yeah, I don't think there would be anything that would keep someone from being able to put a tent elsewhere.
Wait, Ray, if you don't state that, then?
Well, I think that would be easy enough to address in lottery rules. If we want to add any language to these rules, certainly we're, they would do that. We, at this point, we have a motion and a second, so we would need to amend.
So, are you saying that, the way it's written now, that, that?
One spot per candidate, is that what we're talking about?
In 12. I'm sorry, of the 12? Yes.
Does anybody put out that say, how many, if, if they put up, if they're up the way?
I would say so. I believe there is.
It may be, or it may not be prime spots, and you can get 12 out.
So, we can just make an addendum to this, to the rules, have one spot per candidate?
May I ask a question?
Just have one tent per candidate on city property.
We can certainly have that, too. You want to say a problem on that?
Still have a question.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Let's say that we, number one, are we going to give priority to our local candidates over state and local federal? That's number one. Number two, if all the names are put into that, hacked, and let's say that's your seven members running for council, citizens running for council, and they all get assigned a spot, the day comes and they don't show up, one of those spots happens to be a prime spot, what happens then?
I think, Mr. Mayor Langford, I think the answer to number one, and I'm no apparent it, but I think the answer to number one is, I don't think we can give preferential treatment to our city council candidates over state or county or federal. I think that's what Mr. Grabett said two minutes ago, as long as we don't show any preferential treatment towards one candidate over another. In terms of your other, your other comment, if someone doesn't show up, you know, can someone claim it? If it's not set up by, and we can add language, if it's not set up by 10 o'clock the morning of the election, then they forfeited their, their vote.
The polls are a bit, it's, trying.
If they hadn't showed up at 10, they're not counting.
10 o'clock a.m. or 10 o'clock?
10, 10 o'clock a.m.
I mean, that's just, I'm just bringing up scenarios, because, you know, people can be me, go out there and make these decisions.
Or we'd just leave the spot empty. I don't have a problem leaving the?
If it's this body, by this table.
Yeah, I would, I would, I wouldn't have a problem leaving the spot empty. Frankly, I would have a problem doing away with tents on city property altogether. I mean, that, that doesn't, that maybe is more, yeah, a little, because I'm, I mean, for the many's of time, I've been out here a lot, on the, right out here on the, on the entrance, and every, I mean, every year, you've got people who literally block tra- And every, I mean, every year, you've got people who literally block traffic because they get out there, they want to talk to somebody, they say, coming in. And I'm talking about a candidate or one of the supporters, blocks up traffic can actually become somewhat of a safety hazard. Yeah, but it, it, all of this craziness, frankly, puts our staff in a, an untenable position. Because they have, Kenny has to be, or the city manager has to be the one to go out and tell them, this candidate, who potentially is going to be the next mayor, or city councilman, or whatever, you've just violated the ordinance. And if you don't think a grudge can be held, you are wrong. So. You know, I'm, I'm almost to, I'm almost to the point of.
It's what I think tents on city property.
If I could, if I could add one, having researched the issue prior to drafting the resolution, one concern, one potential concern that you may wish to consider is that anytime you're dealing with First Amendment issues restricting speech, particularly political speech, courts, there are red flags built up. I'm not saying this, you know, we're doing it in as fair and equitable manners we can think of, but whenever the, whenever public agencies get involved in restricting free speech in such a manner as this particular person's sign, albeit it's tent, it's really a sign, should go in somewhere that is a better position than another, there is the risk that someone down the line could file a suit against the city. I'm confident that it would survive constitutional challenge, but it's something else to consider when you're, when you're, when you're playing around with restricting free speech. There, there's some additional red flags that, that you can talk about. I don't think we're necessarily restricting free speech. We're not eliminating people from, from campaigning on city property. We're simply restricting tents. Yeah, and, and that's why I do think it would be upheld, and if brought, this is another consideration. The tents are, you know, de facto telling a particular candidate where they can exercise their, their speech and where they cannot. So, I just, I just bring that up as you're discussing the issue of, of. But I, I do believe it will be upheld, and the court will think it's constitutional.
So if we decide to build away with the tents on city property, I was gonna teach someone to bring a fourteen-foot diameter, a bench up there. Stick it right there on the corner.
But, yeah, no, you're right, because someone would do that. They would intentionally attempt to circumvent the ordinance, because we've seen times. They would do anything possible if they think it would get them some advantage.
Tell you what, Mr. Mayor, I think we'd beat this dead for as long enough, I'll call a question.
Well, what, what?
There was.
You played the question, right?
Yes, sir.
We do have a motion in a second, and there was still the question of one candidate per, one tent side per candidate. We have amended. Amended the motion.
That is, the one tent side of the twelv.
Of the twelv, I withdraw.
The twelv.
I withdraw my question. Beat your motion. You withdraw the motion. See, you withdraw the motion, I withdraw my question. You had a question, I'm offering a question to this one. I also withdraw my motion, my original motion.
I withdraw, sir.
Okay, I would like to put, I would like to make an amendment to, to the lottery rules that there is one space per candidate.
Out of the twelve?
What, what's the twelve?
Yes.
Yeah, once again, it's crazy that we have to deal with this.
No, I agree one hundred percent.
Yep, it, it, it's, it's kind of like, it's crazy that we have to have a, a law that says murder is illegal. Yeah, it, it should be common sense and decency.
So, Mr. Mayor, can't they, you know, set a date prior to the election for the lottery drawing? Does he just take much care of, or do they draw a court?
I'll tell you what.
Drawing is conducted by the city.
So, sorry, I like, I just look like a motion, we just do it like offhand. This is ridiculous.
If you're right, you break it over.
How big are my bros?
That's maybe a standard.
You were gonna say something? I, I was gonna ask a question on, on vetting particular organizations, a particular PAC or a particular, let's say, Donald Trump's local, or Hillary Clinton's local campaign office, for like a spot. How, how would you guys like to vet that particular campaign? So you get an instance where the little Clinton campaign gets a spot, it's really a Donald Trump's, you know, that, 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 they have the hat, and you're gonna put a goofy sign on that spot. I just need a way to be able to vet.
Can you write that in my paper?
Well. The, the non-official candidates, so the, the issue campaigns or whatever, just.
Can I ask a question? On, on the, Mr. President, Mr. President, I think I, because I, and, and, Mr. Mayor, this, this, I'm gonna ask Councilman Craigle. Why are you opposed?
I am opposed. I, I, I've got some questions right here that need to be addressed.
Well, you, yeah, you voted no last time.
I voted no the last two times. But since I've got these questions right here, I might change my vote. Are your questions, which way I'm talking?
Well, no, I mean, I'm just asking, we're trying to do something. We're trying to set up a type of more deleted process on election day. And, and I was just wondering, I'm just basing that upon, you know, basing that upon your priority votes, I was just, just curious. Did you mean the joint spot?
The joint spot, I've got my questions here, and I.
Here's where I, here's where I see this. And, and like I said, we've been talking about this for two months now. And, and if I'm not mistaken, I think I may be the person that, either myself or you, what brought it up originally. I, I think it's a simple question, do we want tents? And if we do want tents, there needs to be some rules. If we don't have rules, then let's eliminate the tents. Any others? What, are you?
I think I'd like the motion to, to go on the table.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If you eliminate tents on city property in East Ridge Eagle, you're gonna cause a major problem at the park.
Well, this is just for, for.
I, I understand that, but I want to make sure that, that, that we understand that.
This is just election day.
Okay.
We're gonna have to have a lottery, go through all this, everybody's dead, we're gonna take it up or something.
I'll say. What a motion on the table for one tent per spot. I withdrew, I withdrew my motion, and Councilman Russell withdrew this second. And he made a motion to eliminate tents on city property, and I said, election day, on election day. Okay, I withdraw that, that, that additional, that motion for one spot per candidate, or all that motion. You're gonna have to play a motion. Come to answer.
Play the motion, go tents on election day, on city property.
And I'll say it. And, and there was specific reference to a tent lottery that the ordinance passed once in four weeks ago.
No, it was, it was a amendment to the political sign ordinance, and I believe it, it referred to if you're going to add tents, the, to set up some form of a lottery system.
So you didn't have this except to, to be determined?
To be determined, yes.
Right.
So I just don't have the exact.
Now, the motion, I made last night, to eliminate tent lottery, I'm going to discuss it to be determined.
That's what I would, it's a. If it says, in that particular ordinance, there's one regular spatula, we get a, I'll give that, like you. If it does not, it's, you know, if it does say it directs this hat lot. And we have still a long time on this, and I apologize for that. However, I'll stay here till midnight, if I need to.
Mr. Mayor, I might make a suggestion, you want to go into, uh, dining, maybe, um, dining.
Okay, if we can, uh, we can do that, however, there's a motion in a second on the floor. Once again, to, to live it all that, we will recess.
We draw in a second.
We will recess in ten minutes.